All right. Good evening, everyone. It looks like it is 7:00. I am going to go ahead and call tonight's planning commission meeting to order. Before I get into roll call, I just want to remind everyone, if they can please just mute their cameras or mute their microphones unless you're ready to speak. That will just help us with clarity. And as well as if you don't mind just turning off your cameras whenever it's not your turn to speak, that'll just help clear up any clutter or anything while we're presenting throughout this one. All right, so I'm going to move on to roll call. Doreen asked me to call roll again, so I am President Feeny, so I'm in attendance. Vice President who?
Here.
Commissioner Brooke? Commissioner Jackson?
Present.
Commissioner Kionis?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
John.
Got you there. Alternate Commissioner Sarman? I think I saw you on there. You might be muted. Okay. Alternate Commissioner Shuck? I know he is not present. Commissioner K7?
Present.
Commissioner Watson? And Commissioner Whitehurst?
Present.
All right, Doreen, did you get all those?
Yes, I did. I think Commissioner Watson was trying to get in, but I guess she's not here now.
Okay. I'll acknowledge our rival ones who's here. Next step, next on the agenda is our communications. Has anybody had any commissioners had any communications that they'd like to report since our last meeting?
Hello?
Yes, I did. I think Commissioner Watson was trying to get in, but I guess she's not here now.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, who is speaking?
This is Jamie Watson.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Watson. She is in attendance now.
I don't have a link to the proper Teams meeting. I only have the phone number and the conference ID, but I don't have a way to get into the meeting.
Okay, Doreen, if we can email Commissioner Watson the link to the video, that'd be great.
Yes, I can do that. I'll do that right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Watson. She's in attendance now.
I'm hearing a lot of echoing, Brian. I can hear you talking like half a minute later. Mike, is there something wrong with the sound?
Now it seems to be gone. I heard it as well.
Okay.
Okay, I think it's got corrected there. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is consideration of minutes. Have all the commissioners had a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting? And are there any corrections or additions that we need to make?
No.
No corrections here.
No corrections.
No corrections.
No corrections.
Okay, I will, Doreen, I will sign those once we're done with tonight's hearing and email those out to you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're moving right along. Right on to agenda number five is our public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and open our public hearing for tonight. Tonight's public hearing is PDR 2019-00001 and MLP 2020-00005, as well as MLP 2020-00006. The Sears redevelopment. The applicant is requesting approval of planned development concept plan for Phase 1 and Phase 2, and a detailed plan for Phase 1 only. The existing Sears will be vacated and demolished. Phase 1 will include about five buildings that include a cinema, a hotel, restaurant, retail office, and entertainment uses. I have some required statements to read here. The applicable substantial criteria are those listed on Page 1 of the staff report available on the city's website. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantial criteria listed on Page 1 of the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan and/or land use regulations that are believed to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Here are some general procedural items. Commissioners, I'm going to be asking you to just state if you have a conflict or anything. Your silence will be okay if you do not. Do any commissioners wish to abstain or declare a conflict of interest? Okay, I do not have a conflict of interest or an abstination, but I do want to put it on record that the traffic consultant for the applicant, I work with them on a daily basis on my other projects, but I have not talked to them at all about this project. Does anybody in the audience wish to challenge any members of the planning commission for bias or conflict of interest? Okay. Does any commission members wish to report any ex parte conflicts or contacts? These can be oral or written. Okay, I hear none. Has any commission member visited the site on the proposal? Commissioner who?
Yes, I think most of us did, but I did.
Looks like Commissioner Jackson, your camera's on.
Correct.
Thank you. I have as well. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission? Okay, I hear none. I'd like to give a brief description of how the hearing will proceed. First, staff will give a staff report. Then the applicant will make their presentation. After that, we'll take public testimony. Since we are on an online format, it'll be coming in as the, in the phone order that people have called in. So it'll be either, you know, oppose or against, but in whatever order that comes in. If you would like to speak, please call in between 7:15 and 7:30. The phone number is 503-966-4101. Okay, I'd like to introduce Agnes Lindor from the city. Please present the staff report.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Is it working for everyone?
Yes.
Thank you. So, good evening, commissioners. I just got kicked out of VDI. Excuse me, hang on just one second. Can you still see my screen or no? Yes. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and start talking. I don't know why my computer booted me off here. So, good evening, commissioners. My name is Agnes Lindor, Associate Planner with the City of Tigard. And as you know, the item before you tonight is the Sears redevelopment proposal. So the location of the development site is located on the south end of the mall. It's divided by Washington Square Road. The vacant building that used to be occupied by Sears is on this north portion. And then there's a tire center that's currently occupied south of Washington Square Road. The grayed out area is the proper Sears parcel, but the development area also includes the sliver of parking area that's south of the parking garage that's located just right here. So, as mentioned, the application tonight is for a consolidated plan review, which includes the concept plan of both Phases 1 and 2, the detailed plan of Phase 1, and then two land partitions which split the Sears parcel into three lots and then also separate that sliver of parking area from the larger mall property so that it can be included as part of Phase 1. Phase 1 will include five buildings, and the uses in those buildings will contain hotel, cinema, restaurant, office, and entertainment uses. Those buildings will be approximately 421,700 square feet, and they'll range in stories from 1 to 6. As part of the proposal, there's also approximately 45,000 square feet of central public plaza area. And then in Phase 2, it will be two buildings, and they'll contain retail and residential uses approximately 620,000 square feet. 100,000 square feet. So this is a picture of the concept plan. The L-shaped kind of lot is Phase 1, which is part of the, that's where the detailed plan is applied for. And then this area is going to be part of Phase 2, and the detailed plan will be applied for at a later date. So this just shows the Phase 1 detailed plan. This will be the cinema. This building will house the entertainment and office uses. The plaza areas are here, and this portion here, and then the restaurant and hotel. So as part of the plan development process, an applicant can ask for flexibility to standards in the development code, but in exchange for that, they have to provide some kind of public benefit that serves the general public or the plan development user. So this proposal includes three pretty minor flexibility requests. The first one is to the height limit in the mixed-use commercial zone, which is which the property is located in. A two-story minimum is required, and there are three buildings that will only be single stories, and that includes the cinema building and then two smaller buildings that are in the plaza area. The next one is the minimum bicycle parking and location. 196 spaces are required, and they're required to be located within 50 feet of building entries. The proposal includes 68 spaces, and they will be within 100 feet of building entrances. And then the last standard is to the rectilinear lot standard. Basically, the lot that is the L-shaped doesn't meet the standard. However, since this application was submitted, we've had a code change go into effect in February, which no longer requires non-residential lots to meet the standard. So had they applied, you know, today or after February, the standard would no longer be applicable. So for the public benefit, there's approximately 45,000 square feet of public plaza area that's being provided. These areas will provide opportunities for gatherings and other programmed events. They contain patios for dining, water features, other sitting areas, and then a central lawn area. There's also extensive pedestrian connectivity provided throughout the plaza and also connecting to adjacent sidewalks. There's also a reciprocal easement agreement that ensures that these areas remain in public use, for public use. So this slide just shows the location of the two plaza areas. This here is the mall entrance, and then down here is the Washington Square Road, just so you have an orientation of where these are located. And then this is the close-up of the larger area that's closer to Washington Square Road. You can see that there's a lawn there in the center, some different types of seating, and then also a water feature. So based on the application that was provided, there was enough detail there to demonstrate how the applicable criteria and standards are met as well or can be met through conditions of approval. There are also adequate public facilities to serve the proposed development. And I would like Joe Izniacki, he's the Assistant City Engineer, to jump in and provide some more detail on the public facilities aspect.
Thank you, Agnes. Good evening, commissioners. The engineering department has reviewed the application. We had a traffic trip generation memo submitted by the applicant, and it showed that no additional mitigations would be required as part of Phase 1. However, we required the applicant to conduct a background analysis of the existing traffic that will be used during Phase 2 when a full traffic analysis will be required. So the key point here is that the first phase was found to not require additional mitigation for traffic. We've also worked with the applicant to require bike lane improvements and pedestrian connectivity along the private street and the southwest Washington Square route around the facility along with sidewalks. And all public utilities are available and will be improved through the site as part of the development for Phase 1 and subsequently for Phase 2 when that application comes in.
Thanks, Joe. So, and then the public benefit that's being provided is sufficient to warrant the type of flexibility that's been requested, and all the impacts from the development will be mitigated to the extent practicable. I did want to mention that other than the public comments that were included in the staff report, there wasn't any other public comments that came in. I did receive a late message this evening from a gentleman wanting to know where he can attend the meeting. I called him back and left a message pointing him to our public hearing page, so hopefully he's able to attend and find where we are having this meeting. So with that, staffs reviewed the proposed plans and recommends approval of the Plan Development Review Concept Plan for Phase 1 and 2, Plan Development Review Detailed Plan for Phase 1, and the two land partitions subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. And this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Agnes. Quick question I have before I ask the commissioners is, when we are making a motion tonight, do you want to have them separated out into separate motions or as one?
Yes, if you could separate them out, do you want me to go back to that slide?
Yeah, I mean, taking my notes, just commissioners are ready to do it. So it looks like you're going to want to have on the PDR application, both for the concept plan only and then the detailed plan for the Phase 1. And then do you want the two land partitions separated out or can those be combined?
They can just be together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? And if you do, don't mind, please turn on your camera so I know you're wanting to ask a question. All right, Commissioner who?
Oh, yes, I guess I'll go first. Hi, Agnes. So, my question, I will explain why I asked later. So what's the benefit to the public if we approve the concept plan for Phase 2 right now without approving the detailed plan at the same time? And on the outside of coin, what's the harm to the applicant if we don't approve the concept plan for Phase 2 at this point? Because I have concern about not having traffic study done yet. So if you could just briefly explain what would be the consequences if we don't approve of concept plan for Phase 1 tonight? Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you. So I might have Joe jump in here because I think with Phase 2, there would be, they still would need to apply for a detailed plan review for the second phase. And then, once they apply for the second phase detailed plan review, we would look at the traffic and other impacts and assess those at that point. Is that correct, Joe?
Yes, that's correct. Really, without a land use application for Phase 2, we don't have anything to review and compare towards traffic study at this time.
So, so my question is, what's the benefit to the public for approving the concept plan for Phase 2 at this point? And, you know, on the other hand of coin, is there really any harm done to the applicant if we say, hey, we might want to wait until you have a traffic study done before we approve both the concept plan and the detailed plan for Phase 2? Is there any harm to the applicant if we wait for Phase 2 to take action on Phase 2 at this point?
Commissioner who, this is Tom Huire, the Assistant Community Development Director for the Community Development Department, and I wanted to jump in. I want to remind the commission that when we revised the code and we changed the plan development process, we created the opportunity for, well, it was written that way previously. You could split the concept plan and the detailed plan, and you could do a concept plan only through an application, and you could come back at a later date to do a detailed plan. And we did that, if you remember, the topping subdivision, we did that with that. That was also involving a zone change. In this case, the, I think you want to have the concept plan so that you understand what the whole development is and how all of the parts are fitting together. By approving a concept plan without a traffic study, I don't think your, I don't think your decision is, I guess, cutting off any kinds of options for you when they come in for the detailed plan. Because the detailed plan, as is its name, that's where the real details are. That's where if there were some, some issues that came up in the traffic study that needed sort of conditions or something, that you would be able to do that at the detailed plan stage. You can make, you can make adjustments to the concept plan if necessary. You have the freedom to do that at that point. So I don't think by approving the concept plan for the whole project and the detailed plan just for Phase 1, you're not, you're not putting yourself in a box or cutting off the ability to change that down the road. I had another thought that just escaped me, but does that help? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and my follow-up question is, so when they come back with detailed plan for Phase 2, my memory of the code change is kind of fuzzy. So they don't have to come back to Planning Commission for detailed plan of Phase 2, is that correct? Or is that, no, they have to come back to Planning Commission?
Thanks for reminding me. That was the other point that I was going to try to remember to talk about. And remember, we had that discussion when we were talking about the code change, and the planning commission decided that you would leave it up to the planning commission. So depending on the project, if you felt like there weren't that many issues and you felt it was appropriate for someone who got a concept plan approved to, that you would, you as the planning commission in your decision would basically make that, make that decision. You could ask, you could condition the approval for the, so in this particular case, you can condition the approval for the detailed plan for Phase 2 to come back to the commission for approval. Or you could allow it to go through a Type 2 discretionary review and not come back to the planning commission. That's laid out in the code.
Okay, so tonight we can condition that acceptance, approval of concept plan for Phase 2 will require them to come back to us for detailed plan for Phase 2?
Correct. If you believe necessary for your continued review and discretion, that would be up to you.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner who. Are there any other commissioners that have questions for staff at this time?
Hey, this is K7. I had a quick question, Brian.
Yes, go ahead.
So, yeah, it's kind of a follow-up to Commissioner who's question, which is, if we don't make traffic assessment now and we go ahead and complete Phase 1, will we be restricted on what types of adjustments we have to do to the road? For example, suppose we find the traffic density is much higher, given the residential places, et cetera, that we are going to add in Phase 2. We have to widen Washington Square Road, but we have already built some stuff, some of the areas, and it is hard to widen the road. What do we do then? That was what was going through my head when I read through the traffic analysis.
Yes, that's a good question. And what we would do during Phase 2 is the traffic analysis would have to address all those items. They, if they come up with mitigation is required, you know, it could be adding lanes, it could be signal timing, some sort of improvement out at Greenberg or Hall. All those things would be worked out for the Phase 2 development, and that's, if it does require a widening, then yes, there may be a portion of work that would be impacted from Phase 1. But that's everything that would be considered during the Phase 2 traffic analysis to make sure that we don't have a traffic concern as a result of Phase 2.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners at this time?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Commissioner Watson? Or Dan, sorry.
So on the topic of the reciprocal easement agreement, if I understood correctly, that's currently set to expire in 2032, but the applicant narrative indicated it would be extended. Apologies for my ignorance, but what guarantee is there that that would be extended beyond 2032? Or what mechanism guarantees that?
So, I mean, that could be another condition, it could be added as a condition of approval to provide proof of them extending the agreement.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is related to, I guess, connectivity in general. In one of the appendices in the applicant narrative, I think it was Appendix 8, it references a potential future vehicular pedestrian connection over top 217. And I think that's referenced a couple of times in the narrative. And I wasn't certain what potential meant as far as, is that part of the Regional Center Update Project or?
So I believe that it currently is shown in our TSP, and Joe, maybe you can speak to this. But basically, we were concerned that, we just wanted to make sure that whatever development was proposed, it didn't preclude that connection in the future.
Yeah, that's correct. The idea is to show that long-term planning for this site would allow for that connectivity across the highway, but it wouldn't be required as part of the development.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners? All right, thank you guys very much. Uh we're gonna go ahead and uh move on to our applicant's uh presentation. Uh I will ask the applicant to present your case. Please state your name and title, and please limit your presentation to about twenty minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, uh commissioners. My name is Jacob Knutson, and I am Assistant Vice President of Development for Mace Ridge. Um before I start the presentation, I'd like to thank city staff, um Agnes and all her team for working through this. We've been. We've been at this for over a year and we are very excited to uh to be in front of you all tonight, even if, if we were forced to do it virtually, but. Appreciate everyone's time tonight. Um Mace Ridge is fully supportive of staff's recommendation of approval with the conditions. Uh with the conditions of approval as noted in the staff report. And we'll go ahead and jump into the presentation here, but. Anyone feel free to interrupt me at any time if you have any questions or comments. We'd like to keep this as an open dialogue and, and we're happy to, to discuss ongoing here. So do you want to go ahead and open the presentation here?
Can you guys see the presentation?
Yeah, I think, yeah. Thanks, Mark.
Sure.
So we'll start out with uh, uh I'll, I'll talk about our team. I'll introduce a little bit about who Mace Rich is. Um I'll talk about the existing mall and some of our opportunities that we see around this redevelopment that we're doing. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Mark Taylor with MG two, who's our architect, and he'll get into a, a little more of the details and context around this specific project. Do you want to jump to the next page, Mark? Mark, can you go to the next page?
Uh yeah, is there a lag? I, I, I went to the next page. It might be a little bit of a lag.
I'm not seeing it yet.
Okay. It's on that page on my side. Let me um.
Mark hit the enable editing at the top. Maybe that'll. In that yellow bar, it says, and there we go. Okay, go back one. It just skipped ahead to.
Okay.
And I just lost your screen sharing. Can anybody else see his screen or are you just seeing me?
Just seeing you.
All right.
Here we go. So if you can go back one mark, sorry.
Okay.
There we go. So here's the team members on this project. So um ownership is Mace Ridge, and this is a joint venture that we have with. Seritage Growth Properties. Uh our legal and land use counsel is Perkins Coie out of Portland. Our architect is MG two out of Seattle, Washington. Our civil engineer is W H Pacific locally in Portland, and our traffic engineer is Kittleson and Associates locally with locally in Portland. So who is Mace Ridge? Uh Mace Ridge is one of the country's leading owners, operators and developers of major retail real estate. We have corporate offices in Santa Monica, California, Phoenix, Arizona, where I am based out of. Dallas, Texas, and Pittsburgh, New York. In addition, we have onsite leadership teams at each of our properties. Uh we own forty seven market dominant properties uh across the United States. Uh big positions in, in the Phoenix area, California, uh two malls in Oregon, Chicago, um. D C area and New York. We have an active development pipeline uh centered on A level properties in our gateway markets. And we have an award winning environmental commitment to sustainability, um one of our essential values of our company and well recognized by industry peers. Uh here's a map of the site. Agnes kind of already pointed this out, and I apologize if any of this is repetitive, but you can see the fifteen acre Sears parcel. Down on the south end of the property. Uh this is considered our front door to the mall. Uh a lot, most of our traffic comes in off of Greenberg Road and enters the ring road on that south side of the property. So getting this, this Sears parcel back, it really is a, is a fantastic opportunity for Mace Ridge to. Uh you know, really reinvent the front door to Washington Square Mall. So the existing mall is uh one point two million square feet, and that excludes the plus or minus two hundred and twenty thousand square foot vacant Sears building. Um this is a super regional property that meets the nineteen nineties definition of mall. And what I mean by that is. It has large format retail, anchoring interior, small shop and a food court. And the, the, when, when the malls were developed back in the seventies, eighties and nineties, the whole goal of the property was to get people inside and keep them inside. And you'll see as we get through this that times are changing and, you know, now malls are starting to open up to the exterior. And that is where we see a lot of the opportunity here with this redevelopment. Um Sears closing presents an opportunity to transform the mall from a consumer center to a community center. We have to compete with online, compete with Amazon, and we do that by staying active, staying relevant, being popular with shoppers and giving. Shoppers a reason to still need to go to a mall. A lot of the uses that we're talking about here with this redevelopment um are, are mixed use that complement each other. So the, the community space, the movie theater, the restaurants, entertainment, office, hotel, and then on phase two, the residential. These allow us to share trips. We, we hope that shoppers come and they don't just go to the theater and they don't just go to the restaurant. But they go to the theater and then go into the mall and then go to eat dinner. Um or they work at the, work at the mall during the day and stop in and have some dinner. So it's really um. Different peak times for each of these uses and extended hours that, that help the viability of the mall. Then I have just a couple of stats here. Um one point eight percent of our existing Washington Square Mall square footage today is food and restaurants. The U S mall average is above nine percent. So when you look at this project, this is really an opportunity for us to create this new environment where these. These restaurants, these entertainment, these active places want to be. And it's, it's really bringing Washington Square Mall up to where shopping centers need to be to stay relevant in, in today's world. And then the last bullet point here, no entertainment or experiential uses at the mall today. Um from two thousand ten to two thousand nineteen, the square footage of entertainment in U S grow, malls grew by almost forty five percent. And again, that goes back to the experiential uses and, and how we stay relevant and making people come to the property. So the Sears redevelopment opportunities, we're taking a uh two hundred and twenty thousand square foot Sears building and Sears auto building with about. Eleven hundred parking stalls, and we're building back um a community space forty five thousand square feet as Agnes mentioned earlier. About thirty three, thirty three thousand square feet of uh retail and food and beverage, which is about five to eight tenants. Um thirty two thousand square feet of entertainment, that's one tenant, that's your, your family arcade, bowling, that kind of thing. About thirty three thousand square feet of office, a ten screen movie theater and a one hundred and fifty room hotel. And then as noted here, um redevelopment of phase two includes about twelve thousand square feet of, of future food and beverage that would be below. Uh approximately five hundred multifamily and residential units. So unless anybody has any questions on that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mark Taylor with MG two to uh, to get into some more of the context and details. Around our architecture.
All right, uh thank you, Jacob. Um and uh again, my name is Mark Taylor with MG two, architect out of Seattle. Um you'll see a lot of the, of the similar uh images here, but we'll take you a little bit more detail into uh what the, the vision is for this part of the site. Uh first off, to give you a, a little bit of context, um highway two seventeen is running along the bottom right of the page here. Uh the existing mall um is over on the left hand side of the page with the Nordstrom building. It's not labeled, but the Nordstrom building is just below that. Uh you can see the outline of the existing Sears building. Uh and so you, just to give you a little bit of context on uh what is there today and then. You can see what we have planned uh for the future. Um as Jacob mentioned, you know, the, the traditional mall uh has been anchored by uh these department stores, but. Uh the way that this is transitioning, we're really considering the new anchor to be this, this community driven environment that, that we're creating. With uh the food, beverage and entertainment uses and mixed uses as well. The cinema is located um on the, where the Sears is currently located, kind of in the upper part of this area here where I'm circling. Hopefully, everyone can see my cursor. Uh there's a, a line of restaurants that flank uh the, the, the front of that cinema. On the opposite side of, of the cinema is the entertainment and office building. That's a two story building that sits. Uh just below the cinema uh area. Uh we're gonna go into more detail. I have some detailed drawings of the. Entertainment zone, which is what we call this side of the site. Uh and but we'll get into more detail on that. Moving over and continuing the, the program, uh we have a um. Hotel use that sits uh right on the um what would be the west side of the site, um kind of on the bottom of the screen here. And then this public green space, which is right in the, in the middle of the, the heart of the, of the place. And that's has a cafe and a jewel box restaurant that anchors um that part of the site. The phase two uh buildings that uh were mentioned, these, these courtyard shaped multifamily residential buildings. Uh is, are part of the phase two development, uh and take advantage of just the remaining portions of the site to uh where. Today parking lots uh are, are located and in the future that would be, uh these would be more uh multi level buildings. That also generate a lot more user, users on the site and uh, and, and keep it more active, uh more twenty four hours. Going into a little more detail on the entertainment zone, so again, the, this is a, a, a plan in the upper. Upper right hand corner and a uh sketch view in the lower left hand corner of what that environment feels like. From the mall entry, you would uh, you would exit out of the interior environment and into an open air uh exterior environment. We've uh positioned this in order to have both active spaces as well as more passive spaces. So there's a flex zone that sits. Uh right in the, in the middle of this space, flanked by the two buildings on either side. There are also some uh water features with bench seating and there's some also some loose seating that's all. Uh mixed within the landscaped areas in order to uh give users the opportunity to. Sit by and take, or take a rest or to engage in a more active uh type of environment. Uh that transitions um out and across the, this, this drive uh, this, this roadway. In order to get over to the park space, which we'll go into a little more detail in a few minutes. Uh along the, the base there, we are flanked with uh a lot of active zones, these patio spaces where we see restaurants filling out. Uh in, into the space to, to activate the space more. Uh and. There are also a couple of connections from the, the parking fields that take you through the building to, to engage with the, the site for multiple opportunities. From an architectural perspective, uh we, we've taken some care to, to sculpt the buildings in a way that. They, the massing steps back both, both horizontally and vertically. On the lower left hand corner, this is a view of the two story building with the. Large format entertainment use on the ground level and the office uh use on the upper level. Uh and we're, we've explored in multiple different ways to create a, a more permeable uh. Edge condition between the indoor uses and the outdoor uses that there is. Um a lot of visual connection, but also physical connections in terms of. Uh how the people inside can still be a part of what's happening on the outside. So you create a very rich dynamic environment. The upper uh image, uh upper right hand image shows a restaurant that's in the foreground. With the outdoor dining that spills out onto the, uh onto the patio. Uh with some additional massing steps that happen between uh that restaurant building and the mall entry that's in the background here. Uh that also contains the cinema entry. Uh you can hardly see it, but it's kind of right here in the, in the background there with the cinema building behind that. Moving on to the park zone, so um the area we just left is on the left hand side of this plan. Uh and there is a, a slight gray change that's happening that takes you from uh the, basically the mall level at uh two thirty two and then. Gradually brings you down to this uh roadway that uh is, we have a number of different traffic calming devices. That help to slow traffic down for that area, but then also provide some drop off opportunities, drop off and pick up for a guest of the, of the development. And then again, as you reach the park space, uh there are, this is really the community destination for, for the, the. Place making opportunities. On the lower side, the west side, we have the hotel which defines the edge for. That's part of the space and it really starts to open up here in order to give more ample opportunity for a variety of different conditions to occur that, that people can enjoy. Um we have a water feature that uh sits, uh this is a more active engaged water feature which anchors. Uh one side of the site. We have a log play area and we have some additional views of this that'll help give you a more idea of what that's gonna be. Uh this log play structures is, is uh defines another edge of the green zone. Along with a fire pit area that uh helps to give a variety of different opportunities for engagement along the edge of the site. And that all focuses around on the green space, which is another a flex zone which can be programmed. Uh by Mace Ridge to uh provide any number of events from concerts to uh, you know. To any kind of staged events that might, they might want to produce out there. Um further, there's also a sense of discovery as you can walk along and through some of these heavily landscaped areas to bring you out to. A, a, a more prominent um podium element that we see as being a, a, a little perch to. To look at beyond and catch some of the views of uh, you know, kind of more the territorial views, looking over the highway. Uh and there's also a great opportunity for an art moment here that um can help um. Help signify the entry as you're coming in off of Washington Square Boulevard. Looking at the architecture of this area, um the lower left hand corner, we have the hotel building. Um this is the, the, the ground level is, is all restaurants. Uh and then the, above that, you have the five story hotel. Um and one of the, the key things about this is uh the hotel is also taking advantage of the green space and. Has allowed for a second story uh outdoor space that connects in with their, their main lobby. As well as uh the um kind of more public uses of the hotel. That allow users to spill out and, and take advantage of whatever activity is happening in this uh, the green space. Um you can see along the edge that we are activating it very heavily with, again, with patios that. Allow the restaurants to spill out onto uh that deck and, and be able to enjoy their meal while they're also taking advantage of. Uh the, the energy and activity that happens in this space. The lower right hand corner, uh this is a view of the smaller cafe building that sits uh that, that defines. Another edge of the site. Um the, in this view here, uh these windows are closed, but there's another view, the next view is um showing this. It's meant to be very permeable where users and diners can uh get whatever their, whatever the, the cafe has and, and. Bring that out and, and enjoy uh this indoor outdoor experience. That leads that uh, there's a, a trellis that, that lines the building and then draws your eye out to the freestanding trellis. Which helps to find that green space and then further leads your eye to the jewel box. And the upper view, uh this is the jewel box building that uh anchors the, the green space, and this is a signature restaurant which. Um really, we want to celebrate the, the activity and the energy that happens inside that space. By blurring those lines and allowing uh that entire building to, you know, especially in the nice weather to really uh come alive and, and be. An, an active zone where you're seeing the, the energy and the activity from the restaurant. Uh you have a small little peekaboo view of the uh, the fire pit that's also part of that composition. Along with all of the landscaping, the, the layers of landscaping that um help give this uh, give the space a lot of richness. And the final two views uh I, I have is um, are these more polished renderings and, and this, this view here is uh, is of the. Uh park space. So just to give you some orientation, the hotel is uh all over on the right hand side. And you can see the patios that spill out from the inside and, and are, are starting to uh, uh. Inter, interact with the park space a little bit more. Uh just to the left of that patio area is that log structure I was speaking of. Uh this is really meant to be um, uh you know. Part play structure, but also part art piece and, and a more interactive art piece. It's uh certainly not a traditional. You know, kids play structure. It's meant to be very artistically done and, and uh, and, and well crafted. So that it, it uh has a, has an active component to it, but um also, you know, looks very engaging even when no one's on it. Uh further to the left is the uh water feature, which has some interactive capabilities as well. Um so there would be a, a whole series of, of different components that allow that uh water feature to both. Be more active at times and, and a little more calmer at times. So there's some uh, some maneuverability and, and the, and how that. Piece gets crafted. And then over to the far left is the cafe building, showing how uh that building can really open up. And uh in the nice weather and allow people the chance to come indoor and out. Uh that again leads your eye along that trellis area, straight to the jewel box uh building, which. Is the uh, the centerpiece of, of the. is the centerpiece of of the of the space and and really helps to give that a very elegant, well crafted feel to the to the development in this community space we're creating. You can also in the background see some of the phase two buildings that would be coming along as well. Obviously, those are only for concept approval at this stage, but in these renderings, we we had shown what that full build out would. And then finally, just an overview of of the site, this aerial aerial view showing the hotel on the left hand side. The jewel box building that sits kind of nestled in between the hotel and the future phase two. And then that 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 perch that was talking about this kind of between these two buildings as you're walking from the green space. You can meander along and through those those buildings and through some very lush landscaped areas out to this perch, which becomes a a nice discovery moment within the property itself. And looking back at some of the green space and then looking beyond back to the mall with the the larger buildings flanking on either side of that walkway, but really creating a very dynamic energetic space with multiple opportunities to participate at whatever level that the patrons decide they, you know, want to engage, whether more actively or more passively. And also in the in the future, when you have the residential uses intact, it really becomes the front yard and really that that heart and soul of that community is as it moves forward. So that is all I have. I'll hand it back over and open it up for questions.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments to the applicant at this time? It's like Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, a couple, I think, quick questions. One was in regard to the bicycle parking. If I read it correctly, the current amount of bicycle parking is 40 slots. Do you have a sense for what level of usage those see?
That's a good question. And no, I do. I do not have a sense of what the existing usage of the existing mall parking bicycle parking spaces are. I apologize.
Okay. And my other question was related to something I noticed in the actually, the neighborhood meeting notes. It it sounded like at that, when the neighborhood meeting occurred, it was pointed out that affordable housing isn't required, but it was to be determined if any of the residential areas would include affordable housing. Do you have any updated information on that?
So we haven't gotten to the details of of phase two yet. We're we're talking to a handful of residential developers that are interested. So that'll be, you know, once we will be bringing a joint venture residential partner on board to help us out with that phase and we'll get into it at that time. So I so I I can't comment on that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this time for the applicant?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, a great presentation. Thank you. It is really helpful to see this this vision. So my question relates to appendix nine. The city of Tigard recommended several recommendations regarding to sidewalks, meeting ADA standards, having five feet wide as well as bike lanes. And it looks like in the detailed plan that that was not in those recommendations were not included. I I could be missing it. But I was just wondering, were these things, are these going to be included? If they're not included in the detailed plan right now, why not? And what is the future regarding these recommendations from the city of Tigard?
Sure. Mark, do you have a detailed plan in this in this presentation that you could show where the bicycle lanes and pedestrians?
I think I don't know that. I think this was an earlier version. This is not not the detailed plan. This should be more illustrative, but I know, I mean, I don't have a plan like that up, but I could see if I could pull one up if we needed to.
Yeah, but essentially, I mean, you can you can see, Mark, if you want to point to just south of in between the residential building. So that's that's a pedestrian path that goes all along Washington Square Road and then goes up into our plaza area. And this plan doesn't show the the striping of the roads, but there there are bike lanes that are that are along Washington Square Road. Now, the the phase two, so on the south side of Washington Square Road, the phase two residential pedestrian pathways will be will be part of the 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 future phase two detail.
And this is Kevin Mars from MG2. I have a diagram that was included in the in the presentation that shows the extent of the the bright wave improvements. And I can I can pull that up if that would be helpful.
Yeah, please do, Kevin. Thank you.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a diagram that was included in the in the initial analysis that that meets the recommendations that were given by the city. So going from from left to right, the the green segment, we're providing a five foot sidewalk and a six foot bike lane on the east side of the road, and that happens during phase one. The the yellow and the pink portion were providing five foot sidewalks and six foot bike lanes on both sides of the road. So the the phase one improvements will encapsulate the the northern side and the phase two improvements will happen on the the southern side. And then the orange portion, all happens during phase two, but we are providing five foot sidewalks and six foot bike lanes. And then on the the blue portion, we are upgrading ADA access and widening the sidewalk to the five feet along the stretch that that goes to Greenberg.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys. The I do have one other question. Are there specific businesses that you're recruiting or or having conversations with to occupy these spaces? Because some of those activations that you were talking about with the hotel and the the levels are very specific. I don't know if every hotel does something like that. So I was wondering if you can speak on that or elaborate.
So there are specific tenants we're talking to for most all of it. Unfortunately, thanks to COVID, a lot of those conversations have been put been put on hold while those tenants focus on existing business and they just they just haven't been able to to reengage with us. So I cannot speak to any specific names, you know, right now, but we hope over the next month, two months, three months, that that those tenants existing businesses start to come out of this and then they'll they'll be able to reengage and get back into conversations and that we will be able to announce something soon.
Understandable. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner who?
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm very impressed with the phase two concept and detail plan as well. And speaking of COVID-19, I noticed a lot of indoor outdoor space. And I don't know if that's inspired by COVID-19, but even hopefully by the time it's open, we'll have some solution for that. But regardless, I I'm I like the indoor outdoor concept. But other than that, has COVID-19 inspire you to make any design changes, like perhaps more touchless surfaces? Or I didn't notice any outdoor washing, hand washing station. I I don't know if that's something that will be considered later on. So if you could talk about more about your design challenges and inspirations.
Yeah, I know that. Great questions. And it'll absolutely be part of our design going forward. You know, we are looking out that this is an outdoor environment we chose to create. If we were doing an indoor extension of the mall, we'd probably be in trouble today because I think people are going to want to prefer these outdoor environments, especially for the next, you know, year, two years, you know, who knows? But yeah, I mean, outdoor hand washing stations and all that kind of stuff, that we're we're doing that in the interior of the mall today while it's open and it'll absolutely be part of our design, you know, going forward outdoors as necessary.
Any other commissioners? I do actually have a question myself, and it relates to stormwater management out there. I noticed that the in the story board and also the plans that you guys are planning for detention, obviously meeting the new hydro modification code. But there's not really a mention in there about water quality treatment. And I know there's a condition of approval that'll require that you meet all code and all that to meet that. But has the has the development looked at or thinking about any low impact design or using some of those different materials that you guys have out near plazas as either pervious materials or some of your landscape areas for treatment or something like that?
Mark, I'll let you take that one.
Sure. And we we have had a lot of those considerations and I I believe we have our landscape architect on the phone as well. If he would want to chime in on that as well, in more maybe more detail, but that is certainly part of our considerations and, you know, in terms of providing low impact development where where appropriate and and making sure that, you know, there's allotment for that to the extent that we can. Give Matt a chance.
Yeah, I'll chime in. This is Matt Portius, landscape architect with Hewitt. And when we look at an environment like this, and certainly we've done quite a bit of the low impact development on other projects. We look at those opportunities for it to be fed properly from adjacent rain leaders or the building nearby. So there's opportunities in certain areas adjacent to the buildings for that low impact development to happen and the water to be treated post pre detention treated for water quality in a few select areas around the site. And then we also look to balance that with just the sort of public benefit aspect of it as well. So absolutely, there's opportunity for some of that to occur. Generally, it's closer to the building edges and and where we can feed it with a more amount of surface area rather than in the middle of the plaza.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we move on to public testimony, are there any other comments from the planning commission at this time?
This is Jamie Watson, Commissioner Watson. I am hoping that you are, you could talk a little bit more about how this plan relates to the neighborhood in particular, encouraging alternative forms of transportation to, you know, the the development itself is proposed as proposed is very pedestrian friendly, but how do you how are you getting people to that from the surrounding neighborhoods?
Yeah. So, you know, one of one of our thoughts when we look at these redevelopments at all of our properties across the country is really the, it might be cliche, but it's the live, work, play. And our goal with this is that you put, you know, 500 or so apartments and, you know, those people work at the mall, work at the office building next door, work at Lincoln Plaza across the street. They eat at these restaurants and we really see that a lot of these people aren't going to have cars and and, you know, same with the hotel. There's a lot of businesses in this area. I think the the a lot of people are going to want to come stay at the hotel at Washington Square because of the environment putting it in. Uber is going to be a huge part of this, but, you know, we are, there there will be structured parking that's built as part of phase two. So those residential buildings that you saw on the screen will have structured parking built within. So it's not that we're completely getting rid of every parking space that's on the site today and and just putting buildings there. There will be supplement supplemental parking, but we are, the short answer is we we see this as a live, work, play and a and a more pedestrian friendly and Uber and Lyft environment.
So I I'd just like to say that I'm I'm a a resident of the Metzger neighborhood and I I am, I have on occasion walked to Washington Square Mall. And so I guess I would just encourage you to consider consider that that neighborhood and and how how you can make it accessible by bicycle or or pedestrian pathways. And it the that side of the mall where the Sears, like the Sears Tire Center and that sort of thing is is a little non, it's not the most pedestrian friendly part of the of the scheme and and passing through there. It it would be good to address, like how, you know, but you are upgrading that roadway, you said with the ADA with, you know, ADA upgrades. You know, how can you kind of direct people to to take that as a pathway to come here and use the theaters, use the restaurants and all of that?
Yeah, are you speaking to the the one specific roadway between the cemetery and yeah?
Yeah.
We we looked at that and we did have a lot of conversations with staff about what we could do there. I mean, you're, you know, on the north side is a cemetery property line. There's really nothing you can do about that. And on the south side, there's existing buildings. So we are, you know, we are expanding the width of that sidewalk and enhancing it, but it's it's really as much as you can do today until, you know, at some point in the future, maybe there's an opportunity with Washington Square too and to do something different there. And absolutely, that'll be part of the plans, but we are expanding it as much as our civil engineer could could make work with what we're working with in today.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, any other last comments? We will have an opportunity to ask questions after public testimony. All right, now we're going to go ahead and move on to public testimony. I'm going to ask the speakers, you will be timed and limited to three minutes. Your time will begin after you clearly state your name, if you don't mind spelling your last name, and state your address as well. I will also ask you, since you will be on the phone, if you don't mind stating if you are in favor of the application or against it. Or you just don't have an opinion either, or you just have some questions. So can I my first caller, please?
Clem Roland, R O W, L A N D S, 11048 Southwest Greenberg Road. I live right behind the hotel, Bill Chilo Hotel. My concern is, and I've lived here since 1988, is the traffic, especially around Christmas time, is really bad now. You got Thirsty Lions that has opened up and they're doing a lot of business over there. And margins rented with all the hotels and the restaurants and everything, the traffic's going to be awful. And I think that's definitely my biggest concern is is, you know, you got to do the phase one and the phase two, and you only have two access roads to the mall. And I think that what am I trying to say? I think the the traffic pattern really needs to be looked at. Take a real good look at the at the traffic pattern. And two, if, you know, the the widening, the widening Washington, pardon me, to widening 217, I'm sorry. And so is that going to have an impact on what they're going to do? That's my, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to ask commissioners if they have any questions for Mr. Roland while he's on the line. Okay, Mr. Roland, I'm going to ask, once we're all done with the public testimony aspect, we're going to have the applicant come back up and answer any questions. So hopefully they can take some notes and answer some of your questions there. Thank you. Thank you for calling in. All right, do I have another caller, please?
That's it.
All right, well, nice, short and sweet. With that, I'd like to just have the applicant, if you would like to add anything to Mr. Roland's comments.
Yeah, thank you. You know, the 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 first thing I'll note that is, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, that you know, shopping centers are changing and we're really trying to make sure that instead of us, instead of Washington Square Mall going the wrong direction and declining like you see a lot of malls around the country doing, we're adding these uses that that will keep us relevant and 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 honestly keep the keep the mall alive. We do see a lot of cross shop with traffic. So all of these uses that we're adding, we do see that, you know, that somebody will go eat at one of these new restaurants, but they'll also go into the mall and spend an hour shopping. They'll they'll catch a movie. If they're staying at the hotel, a lot of those are Uber and Lyft. And so you know, I do, I think Diego from Kittleson and Associates is on the line. He's our traffic engineer at this property. So if he's on, Diego, I'd ask you to add anything that you would like.
Yeah, hi, I'm turning on the camera here.
Yeah, hi, I was turning on the camera here, um, had to also turn on a light, um, it's kind of starting to get dark. Uh, thank you for the question. Yeah, Mr. Roland, I, I don't have too much more to add. I think Jacob really nailed it. Um, as we went through the analysis and we considered both phases one and two. Uh, we took the existing Sears that's out there and we looked at the existing roadway system and we compared to the, uh, development that's, um, uh, basically allowable within kind of those, um, those constraints and trip generation constraints. So I think your, your, your concern is, is very real. Um, I, I, I don't disagree with you having driven through that section of Greenberg that the holiday season, um, does see increased traffic patterns. Um, I'd like to think it's probably not just there, uh, in Tigard, but probably a, a lot of other places. Makes guys like Jacob happy that the mall is, uh, is still relevant, um, at least during those, those holiday periods. Um, but I'll just echo his point, um, without getting into a lot of the technical details, uh, the trip generation, uh, that we prepared for phase one, um, for this, for this land use application does include a lot of that internalization between land uses. And I think with the goal of having, um, you know, vehicles that come into the site rather than having someone that comes in to just to go to a restaurant, having someone that comes in just to go to a movie theater is that you have kind of that cross pollination, that cross, uh, interaction, uh, with internalization. Um, it's a small step, it's a, but it's the right step, um, I think in the right direction. And, um, I think, you know, the team will get another crack at this, uh, in collaboration with the city of Tigard, uh, with, with the development of phase two to really look at, um, the offsite impacts that, that could be potentially generated. That's, that's really, that's all I can, all I can add to that.
Thanks.
Thanks. Uh, he also had a question about the widening of two seventeen. Is that going to be impacting, uh, this development?
I, I don't have too much to add to that. I, um, I probably just defer to Jacob or the architect. I, I don't think that that had an impact, at least on the, if you're referring to kind of the layout and internal site circulation. Um, I, I don't think that that's, um, uh, that that's affected really anything. Um, we talked very, very briefly earlier, I believe, uh, um, I don't remember the commissioner's name, that asked a little bit about the, um, the connection over two seventeen. Um, and I think that was probably the biggest impact to the site in terms of the layout and development so that we didn't preclude kind of that, um, that overpass, um, that connection that it still hasn't really been determined what, uh, that will look like. But, uh, everything was kind of modified so that the roadway network and the buildings don't preclude that, um, from occurring. But as far as the two seventeen widening, I, I, I don't think that we were too impacted by that.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll just, I'll just add that, no, there, there's no known impacts. And as part of our, as part of the staff process, there was a, a letter from ODOT that stated that ODOT does not anticipate any extra traffic and, and no issues with, with phase one of the redevelopment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any other, uh, before I close the, uh, public portion of our hearing, do we have any other questions for either the city staff or the applicant? Before we deliberate? Okay, seeing that I do not have any other additional questions right now, we're going to go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing portion of this. Thank you guys very much. So commissioners, I'd, I'd like to ask that we probably are going to, um, let's take this step by step. Uh, I think we should at least talk the, uh, the concept plans for phase one and two. If anybody has any questions or concerns on that or want to talk internally, uh, and then we can move on to the, uh, detailed plan as well. Ms. Commissioner Jackson.
I think I have one quick note that would apply more to the concept plans than to the detailed plan. Um, so, I, I, I don't know that I'd even call it a significant concern, but in, in my mind anyway, kind of at the most basic level, the decision we're making is, are those three areas that they're asking for flexibility in justified by the public benefit that the site will provide? And kind of the, the point that keeps sticking in my head, and it kind of relates a little bit to my questions and to some of the questions brought up by Commissioner Watson, is, at least to me, when I kind of abstractly picture the people that the, the plaza, for instance, will benefit, and when I picture the public in general, those are not identical groups in my mind. Um, so to the extent that we're weighing the public benefit, I'm a little concerned that the portion of the general public that will benefit by this is not massive. But overall, I, I think it's a great proposal, and I think it's a vast improvement on what is there now. Um, and it's a good direction for the future, but that, that one, that connectedness and what proportion of the public actually benefits from this weighs on me a little bit.
Okay. Um, and kind of add to it a little bit. I know, looking at through the conditions and to help, um, alleviate some of the questions of other commissioners is, they are going to be conditioned to widen, um, widen, uh, Washington Square Road, uh, to, it's a private road, but they're going to have to have, you know, bike lanes, sidewalks. So at least through their property, they're providing that conductivity. And then also that one extension, and I agree that the, between the cemetery and, uh, Washington Square Two is a very tight road. So I'm glad to see that we're going to try to widen it as best as possible. But further than that, I don't think we can put too much on this property itself to fix something on the other side of the mall or something, just because that's not the property we're looking at. Any other questions or comments on the, the concept plan?
I'm just going to add that, um, I, I also think that this is going to be a vast improvement over, uh, what is there currently. Um, and, uh, I, I, I realize that we can't fix things on the other side of the road, um, but, uh, that we should be, uh, you know, there, there is the assurance that the, this, that the open spaces are accessible to the public and, um, and the cert, site circulation, um, from, uh, the adjoining neighborhood to this area. Um, it's not only beneficial to the neighborhood, but it would also be beneficial to Washington Square and the businesses there, I think. Um, so, uh, just, um, encouraging, encouraging the, making as much of a connection to the surrounding neighborhood as possible is a good thing.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner who?
Um, yeah, so I, I stated earlier about my concern about, um, approving phase two's concept plan without a, a traffic study done first. So I feel like at a very minimum, um, we should require a public meeting like this again when, when the detailed plan for phase two is coming up for review. So the public has another chance to provide input because I, I do have concern about traffic, um, especially when Mr. Roland, you know, like Mr. Roland, um, when he called in and, and stated about traffic. And I, 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 I just hope that, you know, we can have another public discussion, um, about the detailed plan when, for phase two, when it comes, uh, up for review again. And that's, that, that's the only thing I, I can, I want to say at this point.
Okay, so you, you would, you would be, um, recommending a condition to be added that the de, the detail, the application for the plan development review on the detailed plan for phase two needs to go in front of the planning commission?
I, I think that's a good idea to have, yeah, another public venting process for that, especially we don't have any traffic, before we have any traffic, uh, study done. So, yeah, I, I, I would, I would support adding that condition for approval at this point.
Okay. I could go either way with that. Uh, I do, I mean, I have the benefit of being on the, kind of the development side of things, on the engineering side, that I don't think a developer would go down, too far down a path, um, like they have, that would create something that they know that might not work. But there are some trigger points that until you get into that detailed information, that it might uncover itself. So, um, I can be supportive of that as well. Uh, any other commissioners have thoughts on that, at least on, um, kind of having a condition added that we see this again at the, uh, phase two for a detailed plan?
I am on board with that. That's what I raised my hand for. I agree with, uh, or who's, um, recommendation.
Same. Me too.
Me too.
Okay. Um, let's just keep that in note when we're moving on for, uh, motions, uh, for this. How about let's move on to the, uh, the detailed plan, uh, for phase one. Does anybody have any concerns or questions that we can all answer internally maybe? All right, I'm one that actually really likes the, uh, the detailed plan that they've provided. I think it's going to be a very nice addition to the, uh, the area. Um, as we all know, Sears has been out of business for a little while and that's just been a vacant parcel. I really like the idea of less, uh, overall pavement and more landscaping and, uh, pedestrian friendly areas. Uh, that just helps it all out, uh, trying to transition a, the internal mall uses, uh, to the external, like we're all seeing in other developments is kind of a nice thing to see in this area.
I agree and, uh, very much. I mean, this is going to be awesome.
Okay. Uh, I don't know, there was not much talk in the, uh, the staff report or even by the applicant on this, but the land partitions. Um, does anybody have any concerns with it? I know it just goes with the property, uh, you know, as a development like this. But was there any, I want to give opportunity to planning commissioners comment if they so choose?
Uh, my understanding of that point is, that's the one that based on current code would no longer apply, so it didn't really concern me, but.
Yeah, I mean, that was one of the exceptions, I guess, you know, that we've been looking at, right? About the, uh, non-rectangular lots. But the actual, uh, minor land partition applications that we're looking at is just to create the property, right? That'll allow the cinema to be on its own parcel or things like that, so. But yeah, I agree with you now that it's out of code and it's not required anymore. Uh, I think it's going the right direction.
Um, the, oh, the partitioning, um, how? And I apologize if I, I for, I just saw something and I forgot about, forgot it or what have you, but the partitioning, um, do they all sort of split the public spaces or, um, or does, who, who owns, owns the public spaces?
The, the plaza areas?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the, to my understanding, be the owners, whoever owns that property. But then there's an easement over that to allow the public
Okay.
to, uh, to utilize it. So it wouldn't preclude, you know, anybody or they couldn't later on, you know, shut the door, barricade, anything like that.
It's clear who's maintaining what and, um, and we're not going to pave over everything at some, you know, all of our nice landscaping at some point or?
Correct.
Okay.
So talking about easements, are we still having, uh, I think Commissioner Jackson was talking about concern about the turns, uh, the, uh, turns of the easement. Do we still have concern about the, the duration of the easement? Or are we going to add conditions about the, 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 the duration of the easement to extend it?
I mean, my, my original question was more curiosity than concern, I would say, but, uh, I think there could be room for concern if someone else has it. I, uh, my assumption is that it is and will remain in the best interests of the owners to maintain that space for the use that they're proposing. But I just didn't know what sort of, you know, legal recourse there was or what sort of guarantees there were that it would remain that way, given that the public benefit is part of what we're basing our decision on.
Correct. And usually on developments I've seen is that, um, most projects are just required to have a reciprocal access easement or things like that. The duration's not, that's more worked out by the ownerships, you know, the private owners, you know, because, you know, as Commissioner Jackson said, I go, if it expires, it's the benefit of both properties that need, you know, would have it. So if it does expire and lapse, then that person can't use that driveway and it's not benefiting their, benefiting their business. So it's in the good interest of, of them. So as it's coming up, you know, and, and the duration, they're going to want to redo it. Um, or it's, it, it was thirty some years, correct? Or, maybe it's long enough time down the road that this might redevelop at that time and a new application comes in as well. So you don't necessarily want to have it as a hundred years and then you have to go through a process to avoid it just because something's changed.
I believe it was twenty thirty-two, but was indicated to be extended.
Yeah. Anybody else have any comments, concerns? Somebody want to make a motion? Um, I'm looking at three, three motions, uh, just so we're all tracking this right. Um, I'm going to be asking for a motion on the plan development review for the concept plan review of phase one and phase two. And then I'm going to ask for a plan development review on the detailed plan for phase one. And then we can go ahead and, uh, loop the, the two, uh, minor lot partitions into one, um, recommendation.
I would take a crack at the first one. So I move forward for approval of application number P D R two zero one nine dash zero 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 one. Uh, this is for the concept plan for phase one and two. And adoption of the findings and conditions of approval contained the staff report. Um, except with the addition of, uh, additional, uh, approval that for phase two, uh, when it's, when the applicant submit detailed plan, it must be reviewed by the planning commission.
Okay.
I'll second them.
All right, just a second.
Just a second, okay.
That's all right. We have a plan, we have a, uh, motion for, uh, the plan development review approval of P D R two thousand nineteen dash zero 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 one for the concept plan approval of phase one and phase two with the addition of a condition that the phase two detailed plan shall be reviewed in front of the planning commission. Doreen, is that going to be good enough for you?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Great.
Who, who seconded it?
Uh, Roberts.
Commissioner Roberts, thank you.
Motion carried on that one. Um, for this one, if you wish to appeal, please contact the planning commission for any explanation on the appeal requirements. Okay, now for the next one, the detailed plan. Do I have a, a motion?
I can do it again, I guess.
All right, Commissioner who?
All right, this is Commissioner who. I move for approval of, of application P D R two zero one nine dash zero 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 one. This is for the detailed plan for phase one only. And adoption of the findings and condition of approval contained staff report based on the testimony received.
Good, thank you. We have a motion on the table for approval of plan development review, P D R two zero one nine dash zero 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 one for the phase one detailed plan. Do I have a second?
I second that.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Who was the second again, Brian?
I, I, I heard a couple, but I got K seven on there. I I I heard a couple, but I got K seven on there.
Thank you.
All right, one more motion somebody would like to do. Let's group the two land partitions together, please.
Commissioner Hu, you're on a roll.
All right, I I guess I would do it again. I feel like taking up the spotlight, but okay. I move for the approval of applications M L P twenty twenty dash zero 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 five, M L P twenty twenty dash zero 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 six, and adoption of the findings and condition of approval contained in the staff report based on the testimony received.
Okay, we have a motion on the table for an approval of the land partitions, M L P two zero two zero dash zero 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 five and M L P two zero two zero dash zero 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 six. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That second was Commissioner Roberts.
Thank you.
And if anybody would wish to appeal any of the approvals that we just passed, please contact the Planning Division for any explanation on the appeal requirements. I want to thank the applicant for a very good project and I wish you guys good luck. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, moving right along. Any other business today? Sure, Tom has an update for us.
Yes, I so first of all, I'd like to say I think that went pretty well, given we're doing this remotely and it being the first planned development that go to be processed under the new process. So I think the commission and I think that it was working the way it was intended as we had a split in the Concept Plan Detail Plan. And yeah, I think that was handled well and you know, did it exactly as we laid it out in the code. You felt that you needed a second look at some discretionary decisions and put that into the decision. So I think that's gonna work out well. So thank you. And yeah, good for some of the commissioners, especially some of the new commissioners, to have finally gotten to be a part of a quasi judicial land use decision. I think that's the first one of the year, surprisingly. Updates, still have not heard back from Taylor Morrison, who is the new company that bought Polygon and who is developing River Terrace. So I don't have any updates there. There's one and potentially two previously approved land developments out there that they are still talking about making amendments to, modifications to. That would be another new process. I think portions of that would come to the Planning Commission. So other than that, I'm not seeing any additional quasi judicial cases on the horizon. Just to report to you so that you know, through the COVID crisis, we were looking at the numbers today and this is numbers, I won't read the exact numbers to you, I'll just give you the trends. And this is building permits, land use cases, engineering permits, and also phone calls to all three of those counters, essentially virtual counters. They've, the numbers have pretty much held steady from March, April, May, and into June. So my sense of that, it's a little less than what we would have seen last year ago, but my sense is that was gonna happen anyway. I don't think we were gonna be seeing as many permits, as much activity to the level that we did a year ago. Single detached homes are lower. And I think that maybe has been affected by the pandemic situation. It's hard to tell. But we are seeing what I what I will say, I think has been affected is there there aren't as many of the bigger projects perhaps. A lot of these projects, I think a lot of people have been spending a lot of time at home and have decided to take on a lot of those home maintenance additions and so forth that they maybe hadn't done in the past and it's been in the back of their mind. And we're seeing a lot of those. We're seeing an increase in home occupation permits. So if you just look at the raw numbers, we're we're staying, we've stayed pretty steady all the way through the pandemic so far. One thing I'm hearing in the industry is a lot of, and maybe Brian, you can confirm from what you've heard from your clients, but if you've people who've got entitlements, they've got financing, they've got a lot of that either lined locked in or lined up or pretty far along, that that all is everything that with along those lines is continuing forward. But we may be seeing a drastic drop off in the deals that get put ahead of all of that. Sort of the ideas, some of the real estate work. So there may be a point, I don't know, six months from now where we start to see things slow down as we get through the projects that are already in the pipeline and are planning and and so forth and but I don't know, that's that's what we're hearing from some of the land use lawyers at the region. I'm not, I'd be interested to hear those of you in the consulting world who are related to development, if you're seeing that amongst your clients as well.
Well, I can add, I can add right now, it's hard to interrupt, but you know, we're staying busy, at least on the the land use planning and civil engineering things. Yeah, you're right. Anybody that's been land use approved or was in there, they're pushing forward. I mean, they got money already invested. We seen a little slowdown, but not much. It's more of a slowdown on, they don't need it right away. Right? So there's still a project out there. They still want to develop. Maybe they just pushed it to next summer's construction type of thing. It's not as much of a heated rush to get out the door right away.
So it's interesting, you know, I I pick up things around for various meetings and so forth that I'm involved in. And one of the interesting things I'm hearing is there's several other jurisdictions that are here that are seeing a lot more of a slowdown than we're seeing. So for whatever reason, things are staying pretty steady and staying pretty busy in Tiger, which is a good, good thing for us. We've got a couple of projects. We'll just let you know, we've got a couple of, we call them we don't call them pre-apps, but they're they're in the Tiger Triangle, they're dang this if you're still here, I don't know why I'm blanking on the term we use, but they're they're essentially pre-apps.
Early assistance.
There you go, early assistance meetings, sorry. We've got a couple of early assistance meetings scheduled for some some big projects potentially in the triangle. Again, these are this, it doesn't mean something's actually happening, but to to still at this point have early assistance projects, one of them's a five-story mixed-use building and another one's potential fairly large project for affordable housing. So pretty exciting and just really glad that things are happening in the triangle. I wanted to give you kind of a sense of where things are going. If you're curious about cities' plans, we are in what we're calling Phase One, which was for the Community Development Department, wasn't much of a change from Phase Zero. So we're still doing everything remotely. The, we don't do any in-person, over-the-counter. Everything is still email, drop-off box in the lobby. I don't know if Phase Two is gonna happen. I haven't heard anything from the governor or from anybody else, but given the state of the situation across the country with cases rising as fast as they are, I'll be interested to hear if the state and the county continue on the course Friday, July tenth, that would be the earliest date the county could open or move to Phase Two. Just so you know, the department is taking a much more conservative approach in our Phase Two, we've split Phase Two into Phase Two A, B, and C. And our Phase Two A, again, is not much of a change. We're adding a few more personnel to the office to kind of pick up some areas where things have slowed a bit. But we're looking at more Phase Two B, which would be as as things in Oregon or in Washington County look to be, you know, the cases are dropping, it's starting to look like it's safer out there. That would be when we would start to allow appointment only at the counter. And then we wouldn't, we wouldn't see, you know, just open counter and people coming in and out until we get to Phase Three, which is essentially everybody's we have a vaccine or whatever, people will take, got the vaccine and the crisis is essentially over. So I wanted to just give you that heads up so you know what kind of what are the departments at and what what's happening along those lines. As far as the River Terrace Concept Planning, we have a contract now, I believe. Well, it should be approved by City Council tomorrow night. So we're hoping for the kickoff of the River Terrace Concept Planning on Thursday, that project, and that project's gonna is scheduled to be done by next June. So I will have Skylar Warren, who's lead senior planner, leading that project. I will have him prepare a briefing for you, similar to Susan's briefing on the Washington Square Update Project. And I have hired a new associate planner who took the position that Skylar vacated when he got the senior planner position. She is in working in California and she'll be, her name is Hope Pollard, and she'll, she's will be moving up here and starting on August third, and she will be taking on the Tiger Deployment Lands tomorrow, which is our update, or I would call it a total redo of our commercial and industrial zones and looking at employment zones and employment trends into the future. And as soon as she, she's gonna need a little time to get up and running and kind of get that project going. But once she's up and running, I will have her come back to the Planning Commission or come to the Planning Commission and give you a briefing on that project as well, because I believe many of the commissioners have a lot of interest in that project. So look for that probably, I would say, October. And I will try to get Skylar in a little sooner than that, maybe in sometime in August. And I would assume, oh, we should talk about that. I am along the lines of our conservative approach to reopening the public portion of our plant permit counter. I believe, given the the size of the Planning Commission, plus myself, Doreen, staff, we're looking at about thirteen people. I I don't think where there's a situation where we can get thirteen people safely in the town hall, socially distanced, and if it's a quasi judicial hearing, get the public in the door, applicants, we just don't have the space or the way to arrange that. So I think we're gonna be doing these virtual Planning Commission meetings until we get to Phase Three, till we get to a point when the central crisis is over. So I've discussed that with President Feeny and Vice President Hu, and we've all come to that conclusion that that's the safest and most proper way. So any briefings that will be coming to you in the next couple of months, we'll be doing that again over virtually over the teams like this. And I think that for briefings especially, it works really well. So any questions for me about anything that I talked about or anything else on your mind, commissioners? The one, the one disadvantage of this format is I don't get to see your faces. So I don't know who's who's got a questioning look on their face.
I agree. I think it's a good idea. I'd rather be conservative than not. And I totally find doing this, doing it at work during the day too. So it's the way life is. And I do miss being able to see everybody.
Hey, I did have a, I did have a question. So the the you sent us a note about the, there's a webinar about future plans of the strategic plan, et cetera, right, is that I have a slight conflict Wednesday. Is will that be available to view later on or I have to attend Wednesday?
Okay, you're talking about the downtown?
Yeah, the downtown, yeah, downtown vision.
Yeah, I think since it's, I think it should be available. I think they're recording it, so I think it will be available to view later.
Okay, great.
Similar to these Planning Commission meetings, anything we do on Teams now is recorded and we post it up on the web for you to review at any point in time.
Okay, great. Thanks, Tom.
I heard someone else too.
I just have a quick question about the the building next to Walmart that we previously approved for a medical center. Is there any new development there? I see some machines there.
Yes, that's, that was one of the well, it would be the second project that went through the new Tiger Triangle process. That's gonna be a five-story senior housing project with, I believe, close to a hundred and fifty-seven units, senior housing on five floors. There will be, it's also somewhat mixed use. There'll be restaurants open to the public on the seventy-second Avenue side that will be accessible from the sidewalk, parking underneath and toward the back. And it exits, entrance and exit for autos is similar to the medical center through the easement through the Walmart property to get to the the traffic light. So that's a pretty exciting project. They're just finishing up their building permits. They, the entire project was designed and created and it met all of the triangle standards. And so it did not have to go through a land use review.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, does anybody else have any updates? Comments? All right, Tom, thank you very much. With that, hope you guys enjoy the rest of the evening and we'll see you again soon, maybe. All right, with that, you're in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.